Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. I want to remind everybody to please silence your cellphones at this time. Would you please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Please pray with me if you'd like to. Dear Lord, we ask you to guide our commissioners as they navigate the challenges of the county and acknowledge the responsibilities entrusted to them. We also ask that you bless all that reside within St. Lucie County. And lastly, we ask everyone to remember all those that have endured in Pearl Harbor as December 7th is soon upon us. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, for justice, tolerance, and individual recovery and justice.
We're going to take a brief recess and go to a special district meeting.
I would like to call the meeting to order for the Mestido Control District. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Come back to the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Consent agenda and warrants. Would someone please make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There's nothing on the regular agenda? Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll come back. Is there approval for the regular agenda on item five tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We'll go to presentations. There are nine. We'll open it up to public comment. If you come to the podium, we'll need you to state your name for the record. And there is a three-minute minimum at this time. What?
Maximum.
I meant maximum. Sorry. Yeah, minimum. Yeah, maximum. Okay. So I see somebody standing up. Come on forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Townsend and Commissioners. My name is James Clasby. I'm a resident of St. Lucie County. I recently learned that St. Lucie County has been paying thousands of dollars in annual dues to the American Library Association and its divisions. I'm here to urge you to join the growing number of counties around the state that have decided to end their memberships in the ALA, including Citrus, Hernando, Pasco, Collier, Lee, Santa Rosa, Hillsborough, Sarasota, and Lake Counties. The ALA has become notorious for its aggressive promotion of drag queen story hours and sexually explicit materials targeting children. The ALA's radical agenda and its push to sexualize children goes back years. Over a decade ago, the ALA started the Rainbow Project Book List, a recommended reading list for children that pushes alternative sexual lifestyles and gender fluidity themes on children as young as three months old. The ALA has used its influence to promote books to minors that push not only gender ideology indoctrination, but outright pornographic content. The ALA's so-called banned book list celebrates these pornographic books by pushing that narrative that efforts to keep them away from children are a form of censorship that must be resisted. The ALA is actually the one encouraging censorship. The ALA encourages libraries in the first week of October during so-called banned books week to promote these books on posters in public libraries around the country. The other side will tell you that this is about censorship, but it's actually the ALA that has been doing the censoring. Senator Marco Rubio has rightly called for ending all government funding for the ALA and conducting investigation into its efforts to censor and discriminate against Christian author and actor Kirk Cameron and his publisher Brave Books. When Cameron attempted to organize a nationwide family-friendly story hour event in August, the ALA coached certain librarians on how to invent programming so their community rooms would be unavailable for the event. The Florida Department of State's Division of Library and Information Services recently announced it will not accept any grants with the project activities associated with the ALA or its state chapter, the Florida Library Association. Several other state libraries and counties outside of Florida have also severed ties with the ALA. By terminating dues membership in the ALA, you'll be sending a strong message that our county is standing up to this radical and corrupt organization while adding momentum to the movement to defund the ALA across the state of Florida and the United States. I strongly urge you to end our county's membership and the ALA and its chapters and divisions, including the Florida Library Association, the Public Library Association, and United for Libraries. Please put this issue on your next agenda and hold off on any planned dues payments until it's voted on. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name is Clyde Mitchell, Jr. I'm one of many residents who requesting your immediate attention to the correction of code violations, possible safety and environmental protection violations for condemned property located in 3601 Avenue S in the Sunland Gardens community of Fort Pierce, Florida. This ill-kept property belongs to the Affordable Housing of Florida LLC. The registered agent is Mr. James Hatfield. It has adversely affected our adjacent properties for years. Please drive by this address. And as you return to your address, ask yourself, does a property of this magnitude reside across the street from your home? We need our county commissioners to safeguard the residential interests and well-being of our community in hopes that it will inspire all residents, but especially those that are in violation of code enforcement, to rise up in service to one another to make our community a better place to live again. Special thanks and God bless for your time, your assistance, and the professionals that have all helped me to get to this point thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioners, my name is Chris Peterson. I represent Fortify Financial. And I'm here to address the ongoing issue with the Florida PACE Funding Agency in St. Lucie County and other counties and tax collectors around the state. As you may or may not know, there was a what's called a judicial validation that allowed, had a preemption clause that allowed, according to the judge, allowed them to operate statewide. We, acting in good faith and based on years of extensive case law, we determined that that was valid. And other counties and tax collectors had a different idea about that. And St. Lucie County is one of those. So although we originated, as soon as the county pushed back, we stopped. What's happened now is the tax collectors refusing to put any of those assessments originated under that preemption and the judicial validation on the tax rolls. Just to be clear, we don't represent, I do not represent FPFA, the Florida PACE Funding Agency. I represent Fortify. And I'm here because this issue is affecting hundreds of homeowners and several contractors, a few of whom are here tonight that will discuss their perspective on this. Again, we acted in good faith when we, when we started to originate and we acted in good faith when we saw, when we stopped. Because if you guys don't want us here, we won't operate. But that doesn't help us with this issue today. The courts or the legislature will address that issue with the Florida PACE Funding Agency. That is, that's their job. It's not ours. But what we can do, and the solution to this problem is, is what we've called a curative ILA. Tax collector has indicated that he would put these assessments on the tax roll if he had an ILA from the county. We're not asking for a full opt-in and moving forward operating here. That's up to you. We, our primary concern is making sure these homeowners are taken care of. It's causing mass confusion, causing potential financial harm. And these contractors who have put out their own money for these materials, because we don't pay folks until the deal is done, till the roof and everybody signed off on it. And so those folks need to get paid. And until we get these on the tax roll, we can't do that. So, you know, if you don't, again, if you don't want us operating, we understand. Our priority here is just to fix this issue. And I can provide, I've already provided the chair with the curative, with a draft of this. I'm happy to send it to the county attorney for their review and the rest of the commissioners as well. It just would encompass the affected homeowners and allow them to have their, their projects finished and the assessments on the tax roll per their contract. So I will stand ready to listen to, answer any questions that you may have. I've reached out to several of you already. I'm very accessible, happy to meet with anybody to go over the summary detail. Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robert Anthony Myers. I represent Leakbusters Roofing. I'm a St. Lucie County resident. I personally have eight customers now that have been approved from Fortify. The reason my customers go through Fortify is because they don't have the money. The insurance companies are making them change their roof with funds that they don't have. So they're losing their home. And Fortify has kept numerous of my customers in their home with payments as $157 a month. When these are presented to these homeowners, it's presented in a fact that, hey, don't drag this out over 30 years. You'll be paying too much interest. There's no early termination fee. So we have an answer for you being bullied by your insurance company for your roof that's not even leaking. You know, they're, they're getting letters and they're being forced to change their roof with funds that they don't have. And Fortify has been that lifeline for these customers. There's $200,000 out there now that has, we've got notice to proceeds on. Four of those roofs are completed and done. And now we're out for the whole amount of money because they had put a stop to the payments. So I ask you that you please fund the ones that are already in the pipeline and please consider keeping Fortify accessible to my customers because until this insurance tobacco gets under control, they don't have any other choice but to change their roof or be forced to state insurance. And then that gets astramical and then they wind up losing their homes. And I've seen it happen to several people. So please take that into consideration because these are residents of St. Lucie County that are suffering through this pandemic. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Jeff Pollak. I'm also a resident of Port St. Lucie. I'm here on behalf of Rights Impact Window and Doors. We do have a lot of clients that use this program. I do understand there can be abuses on programs like this. But if you have good contractors, usually, and good people, and good pricing, things work out. And we've helped many, many people who haven't had the opportunity to, you know, they're, they're fighting the edges too, trying to reduce their insurance rates. They understand what's going on. You know, they're preparing for hurricane season. I have people who are worried about that coming up too. So, you know, and we also have programs, people who are now, product has already been purchased. We're waiting to do the installation. And we're still trying to figure out how we're going to fund this process. So, I mean, it's not, it's, it's affecting directly mostly the homeowners. You know, the bigger companies can swallow some of this stuff and fight it, you know, but the reality is that there are people who are going to end up paying on the end. And mostly, it's going to be the homeowner. Because they're going to have to find a way. They're in contract, so most of them. So how do you, how do you justify that to them and tell them that they can't get this, this done? So, thank you. I mean, I really don't have much else to say about it. I mean, I just hope you guys, you know, do, you know, do your due diligence and do what's right and help these people. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi there. My name is John Pankras with Elite Electric Plumbing and Air.
Can I have your, your last name for the secretary, please?
Pankras, P-A-N-K-R-A-Z.
Thank you.
So I'm here on behalf of our company and, and fortified to a degree. You know, we've used Fortify for, for some time and we've got several, several customers in St. Lucie County that were approved. And, and yes, I would like to get them paid. But most importantly, I'd, I'd like to be able to get Fortify forever, much similar to the other PACE program, which is self-funding. I mean, I figure if you have one, why can't you have another? If it's being done already, it, it makes no sense to me why, why it wouldn't, you know, why it wouldn't work, you know, through this other, other program. We, you know, we've been in business here for 35 years, right here on Treasure Coast. My deal is not necessarily from an insurance perspective, but customers with ACs and generators are the, are the prime people. Sometimes a panel change or something of that nature. But mostly, our customers, you know, they're on a fixed income or the ones that qualify for this. It's, their credit is, is low, but by being able to put it on the taxes, it, it stretches it out a little bit longer and makes it much more affordable for them. So it, it's an all-around win-win-win. So that's my deal.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm always around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name's Chris Nard, N-A-R-D, and I'm the CEO of Fortify Financial. Fortify started to do business in PACE in St. Lucie County at the beginning of this year when the FPFA received their judicial bond validation. We understand that there are differing opinions about what that means. The tax collectors have gone back to Leon County to have that overturned. I think that's an acknowledgement that the bond validation does allow people to operate beyond their existing territories. But what I'm here tonight to try to address is we have 400 homeowners in St. Lucie that are either in the midst of construction or have recently completed construction who we have had to stop financing because the tax collector won't put them on the tax roll. So without these assessments being on the tax roll, we can't finance them. The reason for that is this program is largely set up by the state to finance low to moderate income homeowners frequently with impaired credit. So if you look at these 400 homeowners in St. Lucie County, the average home value is probably about 265, 275,000. The FICO scores are relatively low and they're being financed at about a 9.6% average rate. So if the financing can't continue with Fortify, these folks largely won't be able to finance it at any other rate. If it can't be financed, then the projects can't be finished and the contractors can't be paid. Again, as we mentioned, we're just trying to solve this issue. We're not focused on doing business going forward unless somebody wants that. We really only have two solutions. We can either not fund the projects and not finish the projects or we can write a short term in our local agreement that will address those 400 people, put them on the tax roll. Everybody will get paid and the projects will get completed. So thanks for your time. I'm here if anybody has any questions and always available. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else pushing? Susan Millet.
Hi, my name's Susan Millet. I live in Jensen Beach in St. Lucie County, west of Indian River Drive in Savannah's Preserve State Park. On November, November 21st, my family, who is in the active military ammunition specialist, US Navy captain, were visiting and we started to hear gunfire. The gunfire came by our bodies and my niece and nephew in the, who are in the military, told me that this, we were in. And our life, our life was in danger. And we ended up running back out of the way because we had no cover. We had no cellphones. We, we were able to get a cellphone. We called 911. Deputies responded. And when they responded, they found the gun, the gunfire was continuing. When they found the shooters, they were on a residence on Indian River Drive. And they, the officers deemed they, they were doing it safely and legally, even though it came across their property, railroad tracks, the state preserve, and where people were living. The shooting continued again after the, while, after, when they reported to me. The Florida statute 790.155 needs immediate revisit and I'm here to help that, initiate that happening. I'm told I can't have a law enforcement officer go to the person who was shooting to talk to them. I'm told that the shooter does not have to talk to me to help them understand what, where they were shooting. They, their guns breached their yard. Their guns breached a state, a state park, breached across the bright line, breached across FEC and breached into our neighborhood. Across past my head, where I heard the whistle, felt, felt it past my hair, along with my niece and nephew and their, their seven-month-old daughter and their two-and-a-half-month-old daughter. This is, I request some sort of a mandatory pause in active gunfire in residential areas until evidence-based safety guidelines can be discussed, as there aren't any. I've been an EMT on active shootings. I'm a registered nurse. I know what gunfire does to a human body. This was different. This was very personal and it needs to be addressed and changed. They didn't, they didn't keep their lethal projectiles in their yard. And, and by the way, they said I can call 911 if it happens again. And I told this to our park manager and he found, he told me that a bullet was found last year in our driveway, which I did not know about. It's not a one-time event. And the Palm Beach Post had an article about all the other errant bullets that have been hitting people and even killing people. And then, and the people who are shooting aren't being charged. They're not being helped. This is life in depth. This needs to be changed before something happens.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Generally, we don't respond to anything in a public comment, but I, I want to address a few things, Mr. McIntyre and Mr. Landry. I, I think that we do need to go back and have a conversation, maybe an informal meeting to talk about the, the PACE program and the company that, that has been in here. I have concerns that there are residents that have worked, that their roofs have started and there's a blue tarp right now because they've not been able to finish. I think we need to come back and have this conversation. And depending what the board decides, maybe take it and have a special meeting on that to, if we want to take action on it. So I don't know if it's too late to add it to the informal meeting coming up or if we need to just wait and schedule it for January's informal meeting. And I think that at the same time, when we have this informal meeting, we also need to invite Mr. Coward from the PACE program to be a part of that because he is also a PACE funder. I mean, this is new information and my concerns are for the residents that need the work and that work's been started and it's now not being finished because these contractors can't be paid. So George, do you think, what's the soonest you think we can have something done?
I think, Madam Chair, I think if, if the board indulges January, it would be the best time for an informal to have that conversation.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I could just ask, you know, Dan, we, we have engaged in the lawsuit to protect the citizens of this county. And as part of that, I have concerns that we might interrupt our legal position if we go into discussions about other things, given the fact... uh, given the fact that we have an open, uh, part to play in the long, the ongoing lawsuit with a number of other counties. Is that a concern for you?
Well, I, I think it just depends on, on what the board ends up wanting to do. We are, I did send a memo out, we are engaged, um, uh, litigation directly with Florida PACE. We intervened in the taxpayer, the Florida PACE sued the tax collector. And so we've intervened or attempting to intervene in that lawsuit. There was reference to the bond validation up in Leon County. Uh, we have with about sixteen other counties, a bunch of state attorneys, a, a lot of tax collectors were challenging that. There's a hearing set now for Friday, uh, February second at nine-thirty in front of that judge. We are, uh, pushing the position along with those other counties that that was a validation that really was inappropriate, it went beyond, the scope was collateral. Um, so, those are things that we're actively involved in. We can talk about that in January and, um, and the board can decide, I guess, if that's the direction they want to continue. But, um, we are also, um, with the board's direction discussing with the legislature, um, potential legislative fixes there. That same issue is gonna come up, uh, whether it needs to be retroactive or prospective. So, we can talk about that as well. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with talking about it. Um, I think that's probably healthy, you know, we, we're kind of regrouping on it. But it, it really just depends on what we end up deciding because we are fully engaged. We, we believe that what Florida PACE is doing, uh, is wrong in our county. They came in without, uh, our consent. They are not following our guidelines, are, um, it, they seem in some cases to be taking advantage and perhaps misleading, um, certain citizens. I would also point out that of the four hundred loans that were mentioned, probably about eighty percent of those are in the city of Port St. Lucie. So we have a fairly small percentage of, of the PACE loans based on information provided by the tax collector. So, whatever we end up doing, we probably ought to engage the city as well.
I, I agree. And I've also, um, had conversations with Representative Tribolsi. I'd like to have her here or if she's in Tallahassee, zoom in. I just, um, I don't think that it would hurt us to come back and have this conversation and engage her with it, especially with her bringing in her new language that she's looking at doing too, so.
Madam Chair, you had a good idea and that was to engage the Solar Energy Loan Fund herself uh, because they are a registered PACE provider, both residential and commercial. However, they haven't been doing as much residential. So, if Fortified and those folks were to speak with the executive director of the Solar Energy Loan Fund, there could be a possibility that they could create a mechanism in which they'd work together to provide the PACE loans through the registered, uh, PACE provider in St. Lucie County, that being SELF. And so, that would be something that the funding source, uh, forgot the name, uh, Fortify, uh, might be able to have that conversation fast-forwarded because I think what was happening is the original residential funding source for SELF, uh, moved away from the, the funding side. So if Fortified is looking to fund it, I think that, that, uh, SELF might be the answer for them to do that. So you had a good idea.
Okay, well, thank you for thinking that's a good idea. And Fortify's reached out to SELF and Mr. Coward's refused to speak to them.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't know the reasoning behind that. That's why I think if we have this, we all come into the room together and we invite him to the conversation. And Fortify is here and we have Dan, our legal counsel here, and we have Representative Tribolsi here. I think all the players in the room to have a conversation because, to me, it's about the residents. There's residents that need house, their houses fixed and windows and roofs. And there's contractors out there that have started work that can't be paid and we need to find a way to make it right for the contractors and a right for the residents. And so I think if we all come to the room together, it's a healthy conversation that needs to happen.
I would always just remind the, the folks that are listening to this that this wasn't something caused by this county.
Correct.
Or a municipality, or municipality within it. So, we are engaged to try and find solutions.
Right, that, and that's my point, we need to find a resolution. So, George, if you could go ahead and set something up, please, I'd appreciate that.
We will coordinate it for the January informal and circle back to the board.
And then, I do just want to make a brief statement with Mrs. Walters. I'm sorry, not Mrs. Walters, Susan, is that your name, I'm sorry.
Oh.
We're, we're, I'm happy to have a conversation if you'd like to call my office. The situation, i- i- it does need to be addressed. Unfortunately, as commissioners, we don't really have a lot of voice and say in that. This is a legislative action, but again, we all have relationships with our legislators and, um, I'm sure any of us sitting up here are happy to make that conversation and put a conversation together with one of the legislators. We have Representative Tribolsi, we have Representative Tuck, we also have our senators, Gail and Harold, um, and we all have relationships with them. So, I'm happy to help, have that conversation with you, with them. I'm sure the other four commissioners sitting up here would do the same thing for you. So just please reach out to my office and make an appointment and I can set up something and, um, you can reach out to any other commissioners sitting up here as well. Okay, that brings us to the approval of minutes. Is there approval for the minutes on October seventeenth? The regular and the four county and the special board meeting on the twelfth and the reorg on November fifteenth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just a correction of November fourteenth.
November fourteenth, correction of? What do you want corrected?
Uh, just, you said fifteenth.
I'm sorry, fourteenth, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries? We will move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything? I just want to bring awareness to the Public Works item on ten I, one and two, I always like to bring up with, it's an American Rescue Plan. It's your type, you know, to bring up those projects, that this is the Melville Road draining, I believe in your district.
It is, yes.
And, um, it, it's, that's something that's been, uh, long overdue and they're trying to rectify it and bring it to fruition and fix it. And then the midway road, um, off all the sidewalk. So those are infrastructure projects. And other than that, I don't have anything else to add. Does anybody else have anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries, we'll go on to public hearing. We'll begin with item A, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is a proposed abandonment of a portion of Sandridge Road, a county owned and maintained right-of-way. Property acquisition manager Joanne Riley will be handling this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Joanne Riley, property acquisition manager. As the county attorney has indicated, item eleven A one is a public hearing. The Public Works Department here in St. Lucie County is requesting to abandon a portion of Sandridge Road located in section thirty-three, township thirty-four south, range forty east, as shown delineated in a red dotted dashed line. As part of the North Bridge project that's being constructed by the Florida Department of Transportation, the FDOT will extend Juanita Avenue across North US Highway one. And this particular intersection is in very close proximity to North Highway US one and Juanita Avenue. This particular intersection at the present time does not meet the minimum spacing requirements. And once these intersection improvements are expanded, additional conflict movements will occur. A notice of intent to abandon this particular travelway was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on October the fifth and October the twelfth of twenty-twenty-three and no objections have been received and that is a requirement of the code and the statute.
Okay, this is obviously the North Bridge project. Is there anybody any questions for, for staff? Okay, public hearing, anybody wishing to come forward on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, come back to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
We'll go to item B. This is the first reading, this will have to come back for a second reading. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Good evening, Chair Townsend and Commissioners. For the record, Ben Ballser, Planning and Development Services Director. I'm joined by Corey Benton, the Planning Manager. A little housekeeping, public notice for the two proposed ordinances subject to the agenda item eleven B one was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on Wednesday, November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. This item was continued from the November seventh, twenty-twenty-three regularly scheduled board meeting. This item is a county-initiated land development code text amendment relating to the Hutchinson Island Height Overlay Zone, specifically an area of South Hutchinson Island consisting of three parcels north of the Regency condominium. For background, the Board of County Commissioners adopted ordinance ninety-five dash zero-zero-one on January tenth, nineteen-ninety-five, establishing the Hutchinson Island Building Height Overlay Zone. The overlay zone established two height limits with Zone A allowing for maximum building heights of one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet and Zone B allowing for building heights of thirty-five feet. The nineteen-ninety-five ordinance, which was incorporated into our land development code, includes a series of maps as well as meets and bounds legal descriptions to delineate the lines between Zones A and B. The purpose of tonight's item is to process a text amendment to correct the discrepancy in the land development code which has existed since the establishment of the Hutchinson Island Height Overlay Zone. The discrepancy in question is the point where Zone A ends and Zone B begins between the legal description and the code and the map on figure four-point-five-E identifying the southernmost portion of South Hutchinson Island. As previously stated, the discrepancy includes three oceanfront parcels, including the county's Normandy Beach Access Park. The effect of the discrepancy is significant because the allowable height in Zone A is one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet and is thirty-five feet in Zone B. The question tonight is what the board intended when they adopted the Hutchinson Island Height Overlay in nineteen-ninety-five. This item does not amend the underlying H-I-R-D zoning district for these parcels and is not associated with a proposed development application or land swap. On screen, we've included map figure four-point-five-E from the land development code identifying the three parcels in question within Zone B with a height limit of thirty-five feet. The legal description, also from our land development code, is displayed on the screen and identifies the same parcels in Zone A with a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot height cap. This aerial further identifies the difference between the map and the legal description found within the code specifying where the dividing line is between Zones A and B in this area of South Hutchinson Island. The legal description identifies this line as the north line of section thirty-four, township thirty-six south, range forty, forty-one east. This section line coincides with the northern property line of the county's Normandy Beach Access Park, which is the northern of the three parcels in question and identified by the purple line on the screen. Figure four-point-five-E identifies the northern extent of Zone A's one-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot height allowance as the north property line of the Regency Island Dunes Condominium, also shown on the screen in yellow. As included in your agenda packet and described on the screen, staff drafted two ordinances for your consideration tonight. Ordinance A seeks to amend the legal description to match the depiction of the zones found on map figure four-point-five-E. Ordinance B seeks to amend figure four-point-five-E to align the map with the existing legal description found within the code. We have provided findings in support of these options and included a limited list on the screen before you. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at their October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting and voted six to two in favor of recommending the board adopt ordinance B, indicating the meets and bounds legal description shall control and figure four-point-five-E be amended to reflect the three parcels within Zone A with a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot height limitation. Staff recommends the board consider the staff's presentation, information provided in your agenda packet and comments from the public and vote to schedule either draft ordinance A or B for an adoption hearing at the regularly scheduled board meeting on January ninth, twenty-twenty-four at six PM or as soon thereafter as may be heard. Thank you very much and Corey and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, I think that, that something that'll help also, if you would go back to the last slide that had the... Go back one before that, please, right there, just keep it there, okay? Are there any questions for staff?
No.
Okay.
Can you go back one more slide? Because this one depicts it in picture form. To restate your statement on this slide, please. Because you're saying that they both exist. Map exists on this slide and then the legal description.
Yes, the map.
And they're all together in the original.
Yes, they're all together in the code. Map figure four-point-five-E, um, depicts the three parcels within the Zone B, the non-shaded Zone B, as a thirty-five-foot height limit. And the legal description also found within the same section of the code identifies those three parcels within the Zone A one-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot height limit.
Okay, thank you, just want to go back to the other slide. There you go, okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody wishing to come forward? Come through the podium, state your name, please. We're gonna ask if you would please address the board and not the audience because this is taped and in order for the minutes to be recorded properly, you have to speak into the microphone. Is anybody wishing to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gary Oldhoff, I'm an attorney and steward. Uh, you have in your packet a letter that I prepared with an analysis and sent to Mr. McIntyre. Do I understand that everyone has read the letter and I don't have to go through the letter? Okay, well, as my letter explained, um, I was called upon by the folks in the Regency uh, to do an analysis to figure out what, uh, what was the, the legal response to this discrepancy that appears to be in the code in this particular ordinance, ninety-five dash zero-zero-one. And the analysis that I did led to the conclusion, the legal conclusion, that what we have here is a Scrivener's error. And the Scrivener's error is in the text of meets and bounds language that describes, that purports to describe the overlay and it is incompatible with the, with the map, with the map graphic that really guided everything about this. And I agree, of course, legally, as a former county attorney, that Mr. McIntyre and I are both approaching this from the same approach, that what we have to do here is look at what was the intent of the board, the board members, when they adopted this ordinance and established these overlay zones. There's something in your code that mentions, that mentions a rule of construction that's a rule of convenience, that's arbitrary, and it says that text controls over maps. But Mr. McIntyre and I both agree that that is not applicable here. What we have to do is determine what the county commissioners that approved that expected, understood, believed to be the overlay zones. Now, since, since I sent the letter to him at the end of July, I've had now four additional months to look into this further and I've also been able to hear the explanations that have recently come to light by Mr. Murphy, who was your staff member who remarkably did this and now is trying to figure out a way to profit from it. The fact is, legally, from the legal perspective here, the legal answer to this, the legally defensible answer to this, the legally supportable answer to this is categorically that the intent of the Board of County Commissioners, the commissioners themselves, was to establish what is shown on the maps. The maps control and the maps govern. The meets and bound description is wrong. And it's completely wrong and it did not guide anyone's thinking in looking at this except, now we're hearing recently, Mr. Murphy, who prepared this. But if you look, for instance, at what he prepared contemporaneously with this, his staff reports, it all demonstrates that he is not looking at this based upon a section line or based upon meets and bounds description that he had no business trying to write as a planner. Surveyors do that. But, it doesn't show that he did that. His report, his discussion says he was looking at this area graphically based upon the built environment and what was immediately in the pipeline to be approved, to be constructed and everything else was... and everything else was 35 feet. So I believe at this point that it's absolutely certain, I can tell you with absolute certainty, that the meets and bounds descriptive language is wrong. It's a Scrivener's error. That's where the error has to be corrected. Now, the most recent thing that I heard from Mr. Murphy was that he said that he was going by the section line, that what was really driving his thinking about this area, this particular zone, was the section line. And so when he went to do, when he went to do his descriptor for what's shown as the overlay, he went by the section line. I look at things as a litigator for the past 40 years, and I look at things based upon what is logical and what makes sense and what adds up. If the section line had anything to do with his thinking about what was going on back in 1995, the mistake was with him thinking that the section line was the line at the north boundary of the Regency. That was his mistake, but it also is a mistake that he made that's completely irrelevant to what our task is, your task is, which is to discern not what Mr. Murphy was thinking or did or was trying to explain today, but what exactly did the commissioners understand? What exactly did they think? And what did the public that was looking at this and has looked at this all these years since then think were the zones? So the legal thing to do, the legal thing to do here, the legally defensible thing, the legally supportable thing to do here, is to correct the ordinance by correcting the Scrivener's error in the meets and bounds description. May I have just two minutes more? Thank you. I'm representing a number of people, and I may be able with my comments to dispense with the need for others to speak.
Okay, I'm going to give you two minutes, but I normally don't do that because you're setting presence for anybody behind you to ask for the same thing. So if everybody wants to get up here and have their three minutes, that's not fair to them. So is everybody out there going to plan on speaking tonight under their three minutes of public hearing? Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
There are two things that I think really deserve to be looked at here. One is that there is a legal, legally defensible, legally supportable decision and action that you can take, which does not change anything with regard to the ordinance that was placed in place by the county commission back in 1995. No change is being made with that if you follow the change to the meets and bounds language. On the other hand, given how compelling it is that the intent of the commission back in 1995 was to establish the zone as shown on the map, it follows that the only way that you could make a decision to the contrary would be to actually create an ordinance of your own, of your own. If you correct the Scrivener's error in the meets and bounds, that's not your ordinance, that's not your doing. If you correct this ordinance by changing the map, you're changing the ordinance, you're creating this property now capable of building to 125 feet. That's your ordinance. And that drives us all the way back to where do you want to put the responsibility for the fallout on this? In this instance, this is a mistake that was made by staff. It falls on the county. It falls on, it's the county's bad, okay? If there's going to be some kind of fallout, let that fallout occur when the county commission corrects the meets and bounds and gets it straight. And this is really pretty compelling because on the one hand, you're talking about leaving everything in place where you're not going to be rewarding a staff member that made a mistake. Staff made the mistake. Or even, or even rewarding them financially. But you're placing the responsibility to say, okay, our bad, we're going to stand with it, we're going to take care of it, it's going to be on us. The alternative to this is to reward what Mr. Murphy is trying to do at this point, not just countenance it, but reward it financially. But you're going to be imposing a hardship on all these people that live on South Hutchinson Island. In short, you're going to be basically screwing these folks and at the same time giving some kind of a reward to Mr. Murphy. So I would suggest follow the law, follow the legal analysis, correct it, leave in place what you've got. If you want to revisit it, revisit it yourselves. But that's the standard that I think that the board should follow. Go with the change to the meets and bounds. That's the legal thing to do.
Thank you.
May I have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr....
Great, I'm really glad.
Overhoff.
Excuse me one second. Can I ask the soundproof room if they could turn that microphone up a little bit, please? Thank you.
Couple of things that you said kind of clicked for me in trying to work through that. As an attorney and someone who uses the term Scrivener's error, it's not something that most people use on a daily basis. In a Scrivener's error, how would you describe a Scrivener's error? Would it be a word that's missing? Would it be a description of a line or a boundary? Or how would you determine that?
Scrivener's errors are so common in meets and bounds descriptions. I mean, if you're going to look at one place where Scrivener's errors occur, that's it. You always see Scrivener's errors come up in meets and bounds descriptions. This is a classic example of a Scrivener's error.
So let me ask another question to follow up then. So if the surveyor were to use the documentation of the legal description, would it come out to be the location of these properties as they sit today? In the north, south, east, west, all the other portions of the legal description?
Sure. It's my understanding that a surveyor would include these properties in it, but let's not forget that a surveyor didn't do the language that's in your ordinance. It was done by a planner.
Where you're making a statement that it's a Scrivener's error, and there is an error, I think we are agreeing to that. And I want to go back to what you said about something about the county says that the text controls. Can you go back to that statement? So I want to understand it a little bit better. Because...
And Mr. McIntyre and I, you know, we both concur that it does not have an application here. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't relate to this matter. We both have identified both in his staff report back in September, which has become the staff report that you see today, but his report was back in September where he said, just as I'm saying, the conclusion is you have to go back and look at what the county commission adopted and believed they were adopting, and you can't use a rule of construction.
You're giving him a conclusion. You're telling him what his conclusion was. He gave us two separate sets of documents, Ordinance A and Ordinance B. So he didn't come to a conclusion. He gave us the ability to sit here and discuss this situation. So I don't want you to put words in his mouth in the beginning of the conclusion.
I want to show you, I want to show you where that appears. If you look at Mr., at the current staff report, the current staff report at the top in the discussion opens with the very same sentence that Mr. McIntyre included in his. It says, "Where there is a discrepancy between the text and a map and a code, the question is what the board intended in 1995 when it adopted the building height ordinance, the text or the map." Now, later on in both of these, they say, well, there's an argument this way and there's an argument that way.
And where does the part about where the text controls come in?
That's in the argument that way. That's not in what...
Because that's what we have to understand today.
Right. That's why I'm saying that doesn't factor into your equation.
Does the map control or does the text control? So, but when you said that in the county's business, it's arbitrary that the text controls. I think we, I think we manage our entire business here at the county in a way in which we utilize the legal descriptions, we use the information that's before us, and if we have through history used text as a controlling element, that gives us a history. So I need to understand how that unfolds.
Right. In many codes, in many codes, there are no rules of construction. In this code, there are rules of construction, and it simply is what rules have been kind of selected and chosen to be included in that ordinance. There's no legal requirement of those kinds of things. They are rules of construction that are rules of convenience. They're not necessarily rules of binding law that says that you have to follow this in the law of statutory construction. So your code has something in there, but we're both in agreement that that does not, that does not factor into this analysis because the analysis that needs to be done here has to take into account what the county commission intended when they adopted it.
You keep saying it doesn't matter. You're giving, you're giving a conclusion to our attorney while he's giving us options to review and understanding what the facts are around this. So you continue to provide him with a conclusion where he has given it back to the five-member board today to determine what is in front of us. So I get concerned that you're giving him a conclusion that he hasn't...
Let me see if I can explain this a little bit. All right. The actual, the actual rule of construction that you have in your ordinance says that it only factors when, it says, "Except when the context clearly requires otherwise." So it says the text would control over a graphic except when the context clearly requires otherwise. And here, there is no doubt about it that the context clearly requires otherwise because the intent of the county commission is irrefutable, that they intended the map and not the meets and bounds.
Well, you have one affidavit from one living commissioner, and four other people had an opinion. So if one of us had an opinion up here and the other four didn't weigh in, that's not an opinion, that's an opinion. It's a 30-year-old memory. So I just want to, I want to clear the deck here and make sure that we're operating on the same conversation. I do have a couple of concerns about what you...
I'm trying to give you the right answer.
Well, it's the answer you want, and I understand it.
No, no, no. I told Mr. McIntyre at the very beginning when I first contacted him, I'm going to take a look at this, I'm going to analyze it just as I would a county attorney, and I'm going to give you what I get, what I'm going to give to the clients and the folks on South Hutchinson Island, good, bad, or ugly. I'm going to give them the right answer. That's always been my mantra as a local government lawyer, give you guys the right answer.
And I just, I want to clarify something too, is you've said now several times that Mr. Murphy is profiting from this based on the work he's done. Now, that's between you and him, but is Mr. Murphy the owner of this property and will benefit if he was, if he receives some kind of entitlement?
Well, as a consultant that has been brought on board both in the due diligence period as well as at this point, it's my understanding and based on 40 years of land use law and land use work with local governments, that a consultant that is brought on from a company like a planning company like Mr. Murphy is with is under contract and is being paid for the services that he has rendered. And so if he's rendering a service in which he says, you know, saying, I can get you something that you, that you might not be able to get, but I can get you something, there is something worth it.
You're the attorney, right? But when you leave it out there that Mr. Murphy is benefiting financially from this process, you might want to just say the person he works for or something to that effect because I think you're leaving the audience believe that Mr. Murphy is representing himself as a financial winner in this, should this go a certain way. I just want to make sure that that's clear. I don't want any of us to be in trouble.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Murphy is benefiting because he works for a company that was hired by that applicant. He's being paid to do a job through the company he works for. So I think that needs to be made clear because a lot of people watch this, and I don't want there to be misrepresentation on our behalf because this is, this is a serious issue. And so I, and again, you are being paid and you're benefiting from this also because they've hired you to represent them, and so you're going to do and say what you have to say to make sure you win. So you're no different than Mr. Murphy.
My agreement with my client says I'm going to give you the right answer.
Okay.
I'm not going to give you an answer that you want to hear. I would never do that. You don't go to a doctor that tells you what you want to hear. You go to a doctor that tells you the right answer.
Okay. Because this is coming down to opinion. And what is, you know, what does everybody feel is, who was correct, the text or the map? So we appreciate your opinion, and we'll wait to listen to everybody else.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for him before he sits down? Thank you for being here. Is there anybody else wanting to come forward? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Lou Viglotti. I live on South Hutchinson Island. I sent you all a letter and it got returned, so I thought I'd come and just read it tonight. The, I'm here to discuss, obviously, the...
Can I interrupt you real quick, please? Your present for our secretary, can you spell your last name, please?
Oh, sure. V as in Victor, I G L O T T I. I'm here, obviously, to discuss the issue in the Normandy Beach area. About a year ago, I had heard about it, and I attended a meeting with the developer's consultant, Mr. Murphy. Based upon what was said at that meeting, I understand the facts to be as follows. You know most of these, but it's important, at least in my presentation, that they go chronologically. The developer owns several acres of land just north of Normandy Beach. At a site visit, the developer's consultant suggested that the developer purchased two contiguous lots just south of Normandy Beach. These lots were of no apparent value to the developer, except that the consultant indicated that he was aware that the county had previously allowed for a land swap that may make them of some value in the future. I am not telling you this because I know, I'm telling you this because Mr. Murphy told us this at a meeting. The two lots that are, that he suggested the developer purchase are depicted in Zone B on the zoning map. The consultant indicated to us at that day that there was a discrepancy on the zoning map between the map and the textual description of the property. The consultant knew about this discrepancy because he worked for the county, and he stated at a recent planning and zoning meeting that he actually caused this discrepancy. The consultant now wishes that the discrepancy be resolved in favor of his client, allowing for the two new lots to be designated in Zone A. The map was, has been in existence for 28 years and has been relied upon for just as long. Now, I think the foregoing is a case study in why past municipal employees should not be permitted to negotiate with municipality on matters which they controlled when they were employed. The residents of the county are not served by this scenario, and I'm not sure that it's okay with you either because it could appear to diminish the county when this is all being discussed. This process becomes even more concerning when one considers that the developer's next steps, as alluded to by his consultant. If the developer is successful in a property swap and in convincing you to choose, which I would believe to be Ordinance B, he would own two lots with 125-foot height allowance contiguous to his main property. The next argument would be to blend the coverage calculations applicable to all lots despite their being in two separate zones. This would allow for construction on the two lots in Zone A, far exceeding that which would be possible if they were not contiguous to the developer's main lot. The developer could accomplish this by arguing that the parking and other common facilities serving the two Zone A lots can be placed in the larger Zone B lot, thereby freeing the two Zone A lots of height-limiting ground cover calculations. By this, I mean, once you allow them to be contiguous, you then come to the Planning and Zoning Commission and say that we'll put the parking and the other common areas on the Zone B lots, which would allow us to go higher on the Zone A lots. This process would possibly even convey land use rights to the developer that he doesn't currently enjoy, an unfortunate and unintended result. Well, this may seem orderly and structured to some. I don't think it's anything more than a clever exercise in bootstrapping staged in a manner that would, not to disclose the true goals. While residents are assured that none of the current steps, map interpretations, land swaps, are actually dealing with final height and density issues, they're all geared for just that. I think that, and I ask that you insist on a final plan and drawings before moving forward. It would be the transparent thing to do, to see what actually is the goal here. It would be the first step in building a consensus amongst neighbors and the developer. And I think, given the history of this matter, it'd be the right thing to do. And I think, given the history of this matter, it'd be the right thing to do. Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Robbins. I live in the Regency on South Hutchinson Island. Tonight's meeting is to discuss the intent of the county commissioners in 1995 regarding this overlay zone issue. And so I'd like to share with you some of my knowledge that I've gained over the last 20 months. At the October 19th Planning and Zoning meeting, we heard from Planning and Zoning member Billy Odell, who's actually the only person there on that committee, present when the issue was discussed in 1995 and the vote taken. He said that he was at the 1995 commissioners' meeting when the vote was taken and the issue discussed. It was only about safety. He said the intent of the 1995 commissioners was to disallow high-rises north of the Regency. He recalled the vote was unanimous. He confirmed that limiting the height to 35 feet was a density issue related to safety. And the county commissioners were concerned about the nuclear power plant, hurricanes, and possible terrorism. So what in 1995 did the commissioners actually know? First, they knew that the Lucy Nuclear Power Plant was commissioned in 1976, at least the reactor number one. The construction began in 1970. They knew that the Sand Dollar Shores, which is five buildings very close, relatively close by, was constructed in 1980. And we know that since it takes two or three years because of planning, because of construction for five buildings, that this actually, that this actually occurred before the Three Mile Island Nuclear Power Accident in, in Pennsylvania. We know that the distance from the Regency, from the center of the Cooling Water Towers to the Regency is 3.1 miles. We know it's three miles from the Regency to the St. Lucy, or to the Johnson Beach Causeway, and another three miles to the Stewart Causeway. We know that the first emergency planning zone for nuclear power plants is a plume exposure pathway that's 10 miles from the nuclear plant that involves inhaling radioactive particles. So everything on South Hutchinson Island is within this emergency planning zone. And from my own personal experience with the Three Mile Island incident, my wife Wendy's family had to evacuate during that because they lived within 10 miles of Three Mile Island. And also from our own experience, we know from that case that 40% of the people who live there, within 15 miles evacuated. We also know that there were people evacuating 40 miles away during that incident. So from our experience with everybody, oh, and just going back, the 15 miles also extends from the, or the 10 miles extends from the, the nuclear going west, extends one mile west of the Florida Turnpike. 15 miles extends three miles west of I-95. So it kind of gives you an idea of what kind of area we're talking about. From our experience, personal experience, there was total chaos on the road. So if there's anybody in this room who's living on South Hutchinson Island that's only concerned about them getting off the island, they're going to be, they should be very, very concerned knowing that everybody on the mainland is also going to be evacuating. And it doesn't matter what any government agency says because we've already experienced with Three Mile Island. What else did they know? They knew that all the high-rises were built on there in the, in the 80s. Every high-rise, anything over 10 stories was built in. We know that in 1986, the U.S. Senate addressed this issue. They talked about the unwillingness of residents to, to evacuate and that 1,000 people could die. The most dangerous element of hurricane is storm surge. And we all know about Hurricane Andrew and how it destroyed the barrier islands down that way. Hutchinson Island isn't like Biscayne National Park. We've got a lot of population here. So the, the, and you have already experienced with even Hurricane Jean. You saw the Isthmus being destroyed going out to Salfish Point. Just look at the photographs. You've seen the access to the Johnson Beach Causeway, that, where the bridge actually meets the, the land. That was destroyed. It's the same thing as Ian. Ian, 10% of the population out there just did not evacuate, and some people died unfortunately. So safety concerns are just as relevant today as they were then. So please continue to support the Zone B 35-foot height restriction north of the Regency. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Lee Baggett, and I live at Regency. Been a resident there 23 years. I'm a Floridian. I have lived in Florida all my life. I've experienced a lot of what we live with in Florida. I was an insurance man, starting my business in Broward County in 1968. And I want to share, as I was sitting here and I was thinking about '95, '95, '95, what, what were they thinking in '95? Well, I'm old, y'all, so I could kind of give you an idea of what they were thinking. Okay? Here's what happened. When we had Hurricane Andrew. Now, as I said, I started at the insurance business in '68. I had a great time in '70s. I had a wonderful time in the 80s. In the 90s, life started changing. So what started changing? Hurricane Andrew, when it came in, it destroyed the area where it, where it went. It went, it went south of the, I guess it's the nuclear plant in, in, down in, in the Keys, almost, down in Dade County. It went south of there. It did not go over the, through the condos. There were condo damage on Miami Beach to the real, real south, but it went real south, and then it went across, now think about it, went across the whole state of Florida in two hours, and it was gone. It was over. And, and when it got through, it had, it had destroyed communities completely. Now, the other thing that happened, you're all complaining about insurance right now, well, it's still caused by Hurricane Andrew. Hurricane Andrew created this. Hurricane Andrew hit in '92, '92. By '95, building codes were changing. They were telling people how to build houses. Some of our fellows that were here a while ago, they were telling them how to build houses. And, and, and if you had a house, and even today, if you have a house built in, in the more current building codes, then you have a chance of, of getting more done as far as insurance goes. Now, the other problem, by '95, they were reducing the exposure, and they didn't want 125-foot condos built on Hutchinson Island. That's what was going on in '95. Okay? And, and it was going on all over the state of Florida. And by '95, my company, State Farm, was on the way out. I was limited to what I could write. State Farm, the, the fire insurance company, was completely bankrupt from Hurricane Andrew. Allstate was tremendously affected, and as a matter of fact, Allstate was an arm of Sears. And when Sears saw what Hurricane Andrew did to Allstate, they said, "Goodbye, Allstate." And, and Allstate became their own company. Hurricane Andrew changed everything, and those guys in '95, they were still, they were still reacting to Hurricane Andrew. That's what happened. That's what that's about.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, my name is Dennis Murphy. I'm with the firm of Culpeper Interpreting here in Fort Pierce. We represent the owners of the two private parcels subject to the discussion tonight, Sandy C. Properties. Couple of comments real quickly. I'm going to let the things about compensation and, and that kind of stuff slide by, and the personal stuff, I don't, I'm not going to get into that. But I do, and as the board knows, I've been around this county for over 40 years. I did and was involved in the original drafting of this language. And I can tell you from the intent, the intent was exactly what we're describing today. The lines that we intended to identify, the lines that we identified, were based on the section line, which is the north line of Normandy Beach. I will tell you that it was a simple Scrivener's error on the map. That is the truth. That's what was represented earlier. Looking for the truth. You're looking, you know what's going on. I'm telling you, it's a first-person identification of it. That is what it was. It was a simple mapping error. And to that end, I would request that this board, again, this is only the first of two hearings, I understand that, I would request that this board approve the amendment that adjusts the graphic map to match the written text within the code. I'm not going to go into the other, the other stuff about evacuation issues and all that kind of thing. That, that's, those are separate discussions for separate issues. As we, we're not changing any development density by this action. All we're doing is putting the, the graphic depiction to match the text depiction. And I would encourage this board to move in that direction as we go through additional discussion. I'm available for any questions that you may have before or after, as we go through this. And it's my understanding that this is the first of two readings, so that we'll have our second reading on, when in January?
January 9th.
January 9th. Okay.
Any questions for him?
I'll hold him for a second.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, I just, I just wanted to reiterate, this is a first reading, so we'll have another discussion with this, although he asked for some support of whatever it was he asked for. But I want to go through, because we were starting to hear some of-
Wait a second. Let me see if there's anybody else, because we're all going to have a lot of questions. Unless you want to say something now.
No, no, no. I, I just want to go through a list of things.
I do too, but I, there's probably more people that want to talk. So I want to hear everybody. Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Commissioners, Charles Grandy, Hutchinson Island resident. Dennis was great tonight. Everything that he said was right, and I agree with him. I believe that he intentionally did select that line, and I believe that he thought he was doing the right thing at the time. But fortunately, in your package, there's a notes about the commissioners' instructions to the staff in 1994 when this was ongoing. And the instructions from the 1994, 1995 commission was no more high-rises outside of the high-rise area. They were asked to look at all of the property on South Hutchinson Island, and anything that wasn't already built as a high-rise, or there was not an approved plan to build it as a high-rise, or it wasn't in a section that would lend itself to being a high-rise, should be put into Zone B as a 35-foot height limit. That's what staff was asked to do. The mistake they made was those two single-acre parcels, which didn't meet any of that criteria. According to the county commission at that time, they should have gone into Zone B. They were put into Zone A. That was an error, although I don't believe Dennis did that intentionally. It was a real easy thing to do at the time. Now, when we brought this up to the county attorney, the way he explained it to us was the rule about, the legal description takes precedence over maps or graphs, didn't apply in this situation, just as the lawyer had said. What, the county, let me read you this. The two ordinances have been drafted to allow the board the flexibility to determine whether the board in 1995, not this board, but the board in 1995, intended that the text or the map controls based on input from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the general public at that 1995 meeting. That was what you were asked to do. Not figure out what you think this should be, but figure out what the 1995 board intended when they approved it. Now, the logical thing to do is to go back and ask them. There's only one of them available to answer, and that's Cliff Barnes. And he coincidentally was the commissioner for District 5, which at that time was the commissioner for all of Hutchinson Island. So of all of the commissioners, he was the most affected by this. And what he said, and what he said to you folks is, they looked at the map. They said the map made sense, and that's what they thought they were approving in 1995. So the logical thing for you folks at this point is to move Ordinance B forward because that's the one that's consistent with what the 1995 board thought. I did it again. Ordinance A.
See, he knows the truth.
You're not biased at all, are you?
I'm not. Trust me.
Yeah. That was, they wanted the end of the 125-foot height limit to be at where, where it was at the time, which was the northern end of the Regency property. And that's, that's what you should do at this point because that's what you're being asked to do, is right now mirror what the 1995 board's intention was, and you've got that from the board member. And if you want to change it later, you're the commission. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Mr. Grandy, you, you made a statement that, that, that the board spoke about the, the map and, and, and all of those things. I read through the minutes. I don't see that anywhere in the minutes that they even discussed the map. So can you tell me where that is? If I'm missing it in our documentation, you said that they have said, and so I'm guessing that that would be in the minutes if that was, have been stated at the time. I can't find it, so if you could help me.
It's not in the minutes. It wasn't discussed. The question is-
Well, you just said it.
The question is, what did they base their approval of that ordinance on? And the only guy who has testified as to what he was, what he thought he was doing, has said, "We saw the maps. The maps were presented to us by the staff. We knew that that was consistent with our prior instructions of end the high-rises where they end right now. So anything in that area could be built. Anything that was already approved that could be built. But nothing north of the Regency should fall within the zone that allows 125."
Thank you for your response.
I didn't see Dennis here.
Ladies first.
Hi. My name is Joanne McCann. I did not plan on speaking tonight. Been following this for well over a year, hearing all sides of the issue. I live on Hutchinson Island at Holiday Out. Traffic out there during season is horrendous. The comment I want to make is, after hearing all sides, especially the gentleman from the Regency that was in- the Regency that was in, in insurance and discussing the hurricanes at that time, common sense tells me that I think the issue at hand, they would have wanted to limit the building height on Hutchinson Island. That, to me, is just common sense. I mean, you can nitpick about the legalities, or what the, you know, that the text is more important, but common sense tells me that the Board of Commissioners intended a lower building height on the island based on the history of hurricanes and whatnot. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Catherine Fitzgerald, and I am on South Hutchinson Island, and I appreciate your time that you're taking on this, and I would like to have you pay attention to your mission statement. I think it's very well-written of superior service for the quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello.
Hello, Commissioner, Chair, Kathy Townsend, Commissioner Linda Bartz, Commissioner Jamie Feller, Commissioner Chris Zdowski-
He'd be one of the family.
Nice job. And Commissioner Larry Lee. My name is Michael Reardon. I am not being paid to be here. I'm a doctor who has been in private practice and maintained a practice here in St. Lucie County for over thirty years. I've also resided in a home that I own on Marina Drive on North Hutchinson Island for over thirty years. I'm also the President of the North Beach Association and represent about one thousand five hundred households, with a median composition of two, for a total of about three thousand residents on North Beach. In light of the possible precedent that could be established related to the heights of buildings on South Beach that could be applied to North Beach, I can assure you that residents of North Beach support the maintenance of the building height restrictions of thirty-five feet to all property north of the Regency on South Beach. I'm expressing my support for maintaining the building height restrictions of thirty-five feet and denying any changes to these restrictions or the granting of any variances for property north of the Regency. If such a change occurred, or even an isolated variance is granted, it could result in a precedent inviting others to apply for similar variances. This would be very damaging and detrimental to the lifestyle that all residents currently enjoy and expected when they purchased their properties, including residents of North Beach. Not unimportant for us on North Beach is that Normandy Beach has been a halfway meeting point for residents to, to meet with our friends and our families living in Martin County. We would not want to have to relocate and go through the inconvenience, although it may seem slight to many, we would not want to have the Normandy Beach undergo any kind of relocation process. We do not want Normandy Beach relocated. Please ensure that lots north of the Regency remain Zone B with maximum building heights limited to thirty-five feet, and do not, and do not move Normandy Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't be shy. Come on up.
My name is Greg Simmons, and I live on North Beach as well, and I've been in the house forty-two years. Simply speaking, this plan that was set back in ninety-five was a good plan. All the Commissioners back then, it seemed to be, was unanimous. So I'm going to leave that with you, I'm, this is going to be very simple. So you, as Sandy Sea County Commissioners, have the opportunity to leave it as it is. I encourage you, talk it over, discuss it, and do what's best for the residents of St. Lucie County. What was set aside back then, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and all the Commissioners. My name is Wendy Robbins. I live at the Regency, and I'm on the Board of Directors there. Before I give you my short little summary here, I would just like to answer a question that was raised. If the section line was the only thing for settling Zone A on South Hutchinson Island, then the staff report would simply have said Zone A on South Hutchinson Island is from the section line to the county line, but it didn't say that. There are thousands of residents on North and South Hutchinson Island who are very passionate and concerned about the topic that we're talking about today, about preserving the thirty-five-foot limit north of Regency, which has been in place for almost thirty years, and also not to move Normandy Beach. So I would like to summarize our key points. You've heard lots of people give, give lots of points, but I think it boils down to this in terms of those of us that live on the islands. Last June, Gary Alderhoff, you heard from him, our land use attorney, spoke with Dan McIntyre, the County Attorney. They acknowledged together that the discrepancy in the ordinance ninety-five zero zero one, the map showed the ordinance that, the map in the ordinance shows that Zone A ends with Regency, and the text in the ordinance describes that Zone A ends with Normandy Beach. We've seen that, a number of people have already said that. So how do you resolve it? Attorneys McIntyre and Alderhoff agreed that the accepted legal approach to resolving this discrepancy is to understand what the Commissioners believed they had accomplished when they adopted this ordinance way back in nineteen ninety-five. In other words, what was their original intent? Attorney Alderhoff then told Attorney McIntyre that he would research the answer and give it to him. So he did that, and he found the staff's analysis and product was visually driven on the maps, per the staff report and the meeting minutes. He found no mention whatsoever of the meets and bounds text. Attorney Alderhoff also talked to Cliff Barnes, we've talked about that a little bit tonight. He was one of the five Commissioners who adopted the ordinance. Cliff Barnes stated in an affidavit that he based his vote on the Zone A and Zone B overlays on the Figure four-point-five map. So it was on the map that he based his vote. His intent in approving the ordinance was to establish these, these overlays, which was on that figure, and to establish them, you know, forevermore, which is what happened, and here we are thirty years later. He did not consider any meets and bounds text in the ordinance, nor did he, nor did any meets and bounds text inform or influence his vote or intent in any way. Those are his words. He did not recall even reviewing the meets and bounds text, and likely presumed it accurately coincided with the boundaries shown on the map. So Cliff Barnes, one of the five Commissioners who actually voted to adopt Ordinance ninety-five dash zero zero one, told us the Commissioner's original intent, and that was, they used the maps to establish the thirty-five-foot height limit north of Regency. And as I said, we have his affidavit. In addition, you heard Jeff say that Billy Odell offered in the P&amp;Z Board Meeting on October nineteen that he was present for the adoption of this ordinance. He said the intent was to disallow high-rises north of Regency, north of Regency, because of population density issues related to safety. So he's the second eyewitness that we have that the Commissioners used the maps, not the text, to make their decision. So in conclusion, the accepted legal approach agreed to by both Attorneys has been followed and completed. The original intent of the nineteen ninety-five Commissioners who adopted Ordinance ninety-five dash zero zero one has been determined. It was to limit the height of new structures north of Regency to Zone B, thirty-five feet, except for those already underway. And according to the accepted legal approach by both Attorneys, the nineteen ninety-five Commissioner's intent is the only relevant fact in resolving this issue. Therefore, the maps are correct, the error is in the meets and the bounds, and the remaining action, I have only one more sentence, the remaining action is your vote on January ninth. Commissioners, we, the thousands of residents on Hutchinson Island, respectfully request that you vote for Ordinance A, which preserves the thirty-five-foot limit north of Regency. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment, we're going to come back to the Board. Okay, I'm sure we all have a lot of questions. I'll begin with you, Commissioners Zdowski, you're up there getting restless, so go-
I'm, 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 I'm old, hey? I gotta move around, keep the blood moving.
Not as old as that guy over there, though. He was here before Dirk. Charles, you know we love you.
So, yeah, we heard a lot of things tonight, and I just want to kind of go back and kind of reframe and refocus, you know, what we're here to do tonight, because I think that's important. I think sometimes when you get so much information from outside that is, it's relevant to the person who's speaking, but it may not be relevant to the point in which you're going to make a decision on an item, that which is in front of us tonight. So a couple of things I want to start about with what this is not. What this is not is the nuclear power plant built in nineteen seventy-seven, as Mr. Robins indicated, and it costs a five billion dollars. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission maintains a high level of safety in the nuclear power plant, so from a concern of safety, I think anybody that's inside the nineteen-mile radius, we should be concerned either way, regardless, right? So, so, so I understand your point. This is, other, I'm going to go back to the emails, because we had, you know, a lot of emails throwing some things up as to concern. South Hutchinson Island level of service on the road, A1A, is, is a B-grade level of service. So from that standpoint, it's also has recently been upgraded. It has sidewalks, bike lanes, and crosswalks. So from a standpoint from nineteen ninety-five to today, that road has been improved exponentially. So those are concerned about being able to get on and off the island, I think is, is important, that the, the level of service be, be presented. This is not about a site plan. We don't have a site plan in front of us to review, right? There was conversation about density. This is not about density today, right? The other is the beach access swap. I don't know why Mr. Murphy would even present that at any time prior to having a discussion of what's going on here, but this Board will not make that decision in any of this conversation today or January on that at all. This Board may never even take it up as an item to even discuss. And from the standpoint of, if that was even an option, which, again, I don't know what the Board's going to do-
It's not on the table today. So a beach access swap is not on the table. This isn't about North Hutchinson Island. This is about a, an issue that's a conflict between the text and the map that has been brought back to us for review. But what I will say is, in, in regard to this particular, these two particular properties, what will come into play is the building separation equation. Now, I've asked you, you fellows to, to kind of review about what building separation equation would be. I don't expect you to give me anything tonight, but I think that whatever happens, if this were to be determined that the map, it's just a map. If it's determined that it's the text, it's the text. But in the text, if that's the case, then these two properties would be limited to the building, the building separation equation. So given the, the limited space of this property, it would not be able to get to a hundred-and-twenty-five feet without some really crazy architecture. So from that standpoint, that's not before us today either. But the fact is, there is a limiting factor on height, should there be a discussion about that in the future. Commissioner Lee, you and I have some experience in, in real estate, and I'm not throwing you under a bus, but when we, when we put information into the MLS and the listing, what's one of the first three things we do? A legal description? And, and anybody that we're selling property to or, or, or selling with, they rely on the legal description. So that's a concern of mine tonight and, and going forward. What else? I, I also want to say that I'm very appreciative of the passion that everyone has brought to the table. You've been very respectful in this discussion about how to approach this, and we are limited that one person out of five is available for us to speak to. Memories after thirty years are difficult, some of us for thirty minutes, but I regret. So I just want us to think about that coming forward, so when we do have a conversation in January, I want us to remember what, what is not on the table. It's not about the nuclear plant, it's not about the level of service, it's not about density, it's not about North Hutchinson Island, but I will suggest to the, to the, to the staff, this is a, this is a wake-up call. If we have found a mistake, or a situation in which it has to be determined, then we need to review any areas in Zones A and B regardless of the overlay, whether it be South Beach or North Beach, so that we do not have this situation going forward. This happened to be coming to us, and the last thing I would suggest is, and, and Mr. McIntyre, here comes the bus, can you explain to us, because I think it's important that when we make decisions, there can be a legal and financial concern that we take into consideration. I believe it was in the eighties, Florida statute, Florida Legislature brought forward what is now known as the Burt Harris Act. So if an individual, I'll let him talk about Burt Harris Act, and then I'll, I'll speak after that. Can you explain to us what the Burt Harris Act is, and how it could be affecting a decision by a Board such as ours?
The, the Burt Harris Act is a, well, let me just start the, there's a, a body of law that, that's really called takings law, and it's really generated through the courts, typically federal courts, state courts, and it basically, if you take somebody's reasonable use of their property and don't allow them a reasonable use and their investment back to expectations, it's a taking. For whatever reason, the state legislature in the mid-nineties in Florida decided that those protections were not enough for private property owners, and so they enacted a law that's called the Burt Harris Law, and it's, it goes beyond the, the takings law that was there and is, is now, and it, it basically says that if you, if, if somebody has an existing use or, or right of vested use, and you, you inordinately burden that, and you, you impair their reasonable expectations, that there potentially is a cause of action against the, the government that, that does that. There's a process where they, the person that feels that, that the city or county has violated that can file a petition, there's appraisals that are done, and it goes, it goes through the process, ultimately could result in court, damages could be assessed if there's, the court finds a violation of, of the Burt Harris Law, attorney's fees would have to be paid, that sort of thing. So it's, that's, law's been in place, actually, I think, ironically, I think the cutoff is May the eleventh, nineteen ninety-five. So the, the law that we, the ordinance that we passed, I believe, was in, earlier than that, I believe it was in January or February, so we, we didn't, we weren't subject to the Burt Harris Law.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, and the reason I bring it up is because the folks that, that have sent me emails regarding, understanding that they relied on the maps when they bought their condos in twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-two, whatever, and in the digital version, there's a disclaimer in the maps that says, "Do not rely on the maps, refer to the text." So when a, an individual, I'll say the, the people who may have purchased this property are in the business, in the real estate business, so I would suggest that they would have looked at the meets and bounds, they would have- They would have looked at the, and did surveys of the property to understand what they had. I would also state that I believe they would also know that the building separation equation would limit their height not to the 125 feet. So I believe from the standpoint of what we're looking at today is that if that person or group purchased the property based on the information in the meets and bounds in the survey, that gave them what they believed to be Zone A, they would still be limited on the height based on the building separation equation, which would limit it to the height. We don't know what that is, because it's a what-if-then-else statement. It's very complicated. So I wanted to get those points out today so everyone had a fair chance of having this discussion. And when we come back in January, I think it's going to be important to stay to what we're talking about. The nuclear plant, really not something we should be, you know, dealing with. It's there. It's got 40 more years of life. The high level of safety. The road is good. It's Level B. There's a lot to this thing. And again, this board is not going to determine in January if a land swap or a beach swap is an option. This board could just say, no, we're not doing that. End of story. So I just want to make sure we're staying on the page of what we're talking about, and that's really what we have in front of us tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you saved me a lot of talking, because I don't have to wrap nothing up. Thank you very much.
Well, you gave me your notes. No, she didn't. That's a joke, Dan. That's a joke.
But again, I just want to remind everybody that everything he said is true. We're not deciding on the project. Although the gentleman that spoke earlier about the site plan, it does make sense. And I do feel that a lot of you would be more at ease if you knew what the intent was. If you had the plan in front of you and you saw what they were going to build, it would make you feel better and more at ease. But it's the unknown. You don't know what they're planning. You don't know what they're trying to do. You don't know where their parking's going. So, but unfortunately, it doesn't have to work that way. And so again, tonight, we're not deciding on that. That's another whole conversation. Maybe we'll all get to see you back here on the night that they decide to come forward, if it happens in our lifetime. Because so many times, people do this, and they never come to fruition and even build or do anything either. So that's long down-the-road conversations. Commissioner Lee, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Bart?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Fowler?
Just had one question for, well, two questions real quick. Since this ordinance, are there any site plans that have ever come forward on either of those two parcels, south of Normandy but north of Regency? And if so, were they at a 35-foot or 125-foot?
You want me to answer that?
No, she's asking staff. Sir, you have to talk, you're an attorney. You have to talk to the microphone, and she's asking staff at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Fowler, in 2006, the San Luis County Planning and Development Services team, in partnership with the Development Review Committee, was evaluating a site plan by the name of Ocean K. It was pursuing a single-family condominium development across the properties, and it was not of significant height. Then subsequently, in 2016, the owners at that time filed a pre-application request, which is essentially an informal meeting with the Development Review Committee to evaluate potential development ideas, proposals. And at that time, they were seeking height above 35 feet. But I believe their specified height was around 42 feet.
Okay. Thank you. And Normandy Beach existed where it currently does today at that point in time as well, right?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Mr. McIntyre?
Yeah, just, because I've been talked about a lot, so I thought it would be, might be good to hear directly from the horse's mouth in this case. First of all, this is the first public hearing. I'd encourage the board to do what you have done, which is listen to all sides. I think if you've got any questions or you need any information and you know that now or between now and January 9th, please let us know. We'll bring that to you. I'd encourage you to bring both ordinances forward on the 9th and not make a decision on that, because I think the extra time will be helpful to you. And you'll be in a position on the 9th, hopefully, to make that decision. It gives you more time to think about it. I do agree that the test that we should ultimately be looking at is what the board intended to do in 1995. I think that really is the relevant question to ask. You know, there's been, I think, from a staff perspective, what we try to do is put the arguments, both for and against each particular ordinance, in play. It's in front of you. You know, in terms of the text and, you know, the rules of construction, it's there. It's an argument, I guess, in one side. But the other side says, well, you can't just read that in a vacuum. It's in the context, if the context allows. And in this case, the context doesn't allow. So you have to, you kind of have to think about that in terms of whether, you know, in the context and all the arguments, whether the map, in this case, would supersede the text because of the context. That's a judgment call that you'll have to make. I think, again, you know, we just need to try to figure out what the right thing to do here is in terms, and it's hard, because the board in 1995 probably didn't realize that there was a text discrepancy with the map. Had they done, known that, they would have resolved it at that time. So we don't have, you know, the ability to say, well, they would have done this or that. We just have to look at all the facts that we have in front of us. Mr. Oldenhoff, I think, has done an excellent job from his perspective outlining those. You know, we've listened to Mr. Murphy and his perspective on what he intended. So the board needs to weigh all of that and ultimately determine, you know, what the board was intending to do. And we've tried to put that out for you, because there are some arguments, both for and against. And I do think at, on the 9th, that hopefully, we'll be in a position to make that judgment. Whatever we decide to do, we need to make sure we put in the record the reasons when you get to that stage, whether you go for the map or the text. It's important, I think, to put the reasons out there. So if you have any questions of staff right now, if you have any directions, we're happy to try to come up with any additional information that the board might want. If you come up with those between now and the 9th, let us know, and we'll be happy to present that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I did want to extend an invitation to you, Ms. Antemarad. Do you have anything you want to add, since you have a planning background?
No, ma'am. This is really, you know, your decision on their interpretation.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions? My recommendation is that we, just as Mr. McIntyre, is to move it forward for the second reading and then reach the final decision on that date, so that that gives you more time to continue to ask questions. And if you have other questions or concerns to meet with Mr. McIntyre or if you even want to reach out to the attorney that was here tonight representing the residents. However, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move this item to January 9th, 2024, at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter, as may be heard for the second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Okay, motion carries. Thank you all for being here. I know that it takes a lot for you all to come out, and it does mean a lot to us that you're engaged and that you take the time to come out and attend these meetings. So again, we're all, our offices are open. Our cards are outside when you enter the hall. Feel free to reach out to any of us by email or phone. And we're also open to have appointments with you one-on-one. So thanks for being here, and y'all have a good Christmas. We're going to take 10 minutes and let the room clear, and then we'll come back. It's going to be very brief after that. Two simple things.
That's fair.
But quite. I know, I was going to go ahead and just roll through the next two. I was going to roll through the next two, but. Okay, we are back in session, and we are going to continue with item two.
All right. Light-hearted discussion about backyard chickens.
Of course it is, Ben. You know that this is one of our favorite things.
So good evening, Chair Townsend and Commissioners. Again, Ben Balser for the record, Planning and Development Services Director. Agenda item 11B2 is the adoption hearing for the county-initiated Land Development Code text amendment related to backyard chickens. Specifically, the required buffering between registered chicken coops and adjacent properties. This item was originally discussed at the informal board meeting in May. Public notice for this item was advertised in the St. Louis New Tribune on Wednesday, November 22nd. For background, in 2020, the board adopted the ordinance establishing the backyard chicken program, allowing residents within an occupied residential zoning district to keep up to five hen chickens. The adopted language also spelled out the location and buffering requirements for the chicken coops. The coops must be in the rear of the yard, meet applicable setbacks, and be screened from adjacent properties and rights-of-way by a six-foot-tall opaque fence or wall located on the property line. The purpose of this text amendment is to provide an option to allow for vegetated buffering as an alternative to installing an opaque fence or wall to satisfy the screening requirements for the coop. Additionally, the drafted language provides flexibility by removing the requirement that the screening be located on the property line and allow it to be placed elsewhere in the rear yard. Draft ordinance provides the option to plant or preserve evergreen shrubs that can be maintained at a minimum of six feet in height to satisfy the buffering requirement. And the last underlined sentence allows for the required buffering to be between the registered chicken coop and the property line, not specifically on the property line. The amendment enhances the existing Land Development Code language and provides flexible options for residents wishing to participate in the program. Planning and Zoning Commission heard this ordinance at the September 28th meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommends the board vote to approve ordinance 2023-17 as drafted by staff, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward? I know everybody's excited for this. That's why they didn't attend. So we'll close the public comment. We'll come back to the board.
Motion to approve ordinance.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Now I'm going to put a wrench in all this, Mr. Balser. I want to talk at an informal meeting about pigs. So we need to move forward with conversation that the 4-H families might be able to have a pig on their property. So it's time to have that conversation. So if we could just add that to an informal, maybe February, let the kids get through the fair. And then that way, the families will know if they're going to be allowed to have them in their yards moving on to the next fair. Because they usually have a couple of months in between before they have to get their show pig again. There seems to be a lot of conversation. I know in my district, I would think, and yours too, Commissioner Fowler.
Quite a few.
About families that have these in a residential neighborhood, and they are obscured, and they are behind privacy fences. But there's a lot of controversy going on about it right now. So I'd like to open that up to have that conversation, okay?
We will work with administration to schedule that.
Thank you.
And we've had preliminary discussions between administration and our 4-H representatives and code enforcement.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item three.
And good evening, and good evening again, Chair Townsend and Commissioners. Ben Balser, Planning and Development Services Director, joined again by Corey Benton, our Planning Manager. Item 11B3 is the first reading for a county-initiated Land Development Code text amendment that, if adopted, would allow for a limited additional height limits for non-habitable architectural features and mechanical equipment, as well as expand the height allowance for accessory structures within residential and agricultural zoning districts. This item was originally discussed at the September informal board meeting, where this board requested staff bring the draft language forward in the form of a county-initiated text amendment. The public notice for this item was advertised in the St. Louis New Tribune on Wednesday, November 22nd. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Corey, who presented this item to the Planning and Zoning Commission in November to go over the technical details of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Balser. So as previously highlighted, the first component of the amendment would allow for non-habitable architectural and mechanical features, such as parapets, chimneys, spires, elevator machinery, and shafts, to exceed the maximum building height within the established zoning district for a single-family development by not more than five feet. And for multifamily and commercial development, up to 20%, with the caveat that it not exceed an allowance of 12 feet. And then that area is limited to no more than 10% of the roof area. And to distinguish these components for single-family, traditionally, that would be more cupolas, dormers, other architectural features, again, non-habitable, not anticipated to have a room or a functional space, but to avoid stifling creativity in design when they're working with their architects to prepare unique single-family development in our community. And then for multifamily, the allowance, and this is a component that the Planning and Zoning Commission elevated from the five feet that was considered during the informal meeting, is to accommodate typical fixtures or mechanical equipment that you would see with that type of development. For instance, an elevator shaft and machinery, that typically those elements are between eight and 12 feet. That would need to be mounted on the rooftop. And this would allow those items to be screened with a parapet or other design features. So they're built into the overall theme and design of the complex. And then part two of the ordinance, which we'll detail, is an additional allowance for, or clarification of allowances for detached garages, carports, and enclosed accessory structures for single-family development, distinguishing between the residential district and the agricultural districts, where today, an interpretation of the Land Development Code may limit the height of the architectural, the accessory structure to that of the principal structure with older homes, and we'll provide some examples here shortly, may limit somebody's ability to provide for these much-needed storage structures on site. So again, as we've talked much this evening, interpretation is key. Implementation is important. So these ordinances look to provide specified and clarified standards, allow for a little bit of wiggle room as to support our community and allow for creativity. And we'll detail them very, very briefly. So in the county, we measure the height of your overall structure from the minimum finished grade or regulatory flood elevation for flat roofs and mansard roofs to that peak. For gable roofs that have a slope or hip roofs that also have a slope, it's measured to the mean or average roof height. And historically, we've allowed for rooftop-mounted solar fixtures or panels to be exempt from this height restriction. And as staff, we've implemented an unwritten guideline that parapets and similar architectural features may have a two-foot extension. There's no specific basis for that other than occasionally, you'll have a structure that meets the full standards, these exhibits and the text. And there's a chimney or something that's required by building code, and it's a very minor projection, a foot or two feet, that does not impact views or impact the regulation and lawful implementation of these guidelines. So we've allowed it, but we have garnered feedback from architects and homeowners that are looking for a little bit more creativity. As discussed at the informal, the city of Fort Pierce has a 20% figure for these non-habitable architectural features. This is an exhibit out of their South Beach overlay. Martin County has a range between four to eight feet for similar non-habitable architectural features. And Inure County has a flat five feet. At informal, we considered the flat five-foot allowance. But at our Planning and Zoning Commission hearing in November, Planning and Zoning Commission hearing in November, input from the commission suggested a variable between single-family development and multifamily commercial, as stated, to allow for those fixtures that are more likely with development designs for multifamily and commercial, in with those limitations that we discussed of absolute cap for multifamily and commercial at 12 feet, and it's a limitation of no more than 10% of the roof surface area. And that was unanimous recommendation from Planning and Zoning on the architectural designs. Then shifting to part two of the ordinance relating to accessory structures, this is a snapshot of our existing code that states that accessory structure or use shall be subordinate in area, extent, and purpose. And implementation of this guideline extent would also include height by definition. So what we've encountered over the last eighteen or so months, somebody has a 1955 home, it's 12 feet in height, they're proposing a carport at 16 feet in height, and implementing this guideline, the accessory structure shall be smaller in area, mass, extent, or height. And so they haven't been able to permit that absent of variance, or the integration of that garage or storage component within their home under the same roof, whereas if it's all merged in one structure, that's the principal structure, and there's not the micro-regulation. So this board guided staff to initiate this amendment and allow for some flexibility. As we discussed, here's a scenario. Two homes on Innuiva Drive, built several decades ago, neighboring structures are taller, but if somebody was proposing a modest-sized shed, as displayed on screen, that would not be approved under building permit today. But the amendment presented before you this evening would allow for these accessory structures in a single-family residential district or multifamily residential district not to exceed 20 feet in height, if they are taller than the principal residence. And the amendment, as guided by the Planning and Zoning Commission, would provide a limitation that this accessory structure, where it exceeds the height of the home, be recessed or set back five feet from the front facade plane. So we'll display these potential scenarios. On the left, the primary residence meets setbacks, is compliant with the Land Development Code for building coverage, but it's only 12 feet in height. They're proposing a detached garage. Today, that couldn't exceed the height of the principal home. However, they're proposing something at 16 or 18 feet. That would be permissible under this ordinance, as long as it's still adhered to building coverage, overall height of the district, setbacks, but it would be permissible up to a 20-foot height if it's recessed from that front setback of the home by five feet. Second scenario, someone's proposing a detached garage, 20 feet in height. It would be permissible with the will of their property, and that's very common in the designs that we see on Innuiva Drive, some of the more estate-sized lots. The purpose behind that five-foot setback is to ensure that these accessory storage structures or garages don't rule the streetscapes and provide the premier view still of the primary residence, and it's a minor setback. Here are simply two examples. Under the current Land Development Code, someone's garage, where integrated with the home, could be taller than the remainder of the home under the same roof. That's permitted by right. Today, under the Land Development Code, this scenario on the right, where the garage is taller than the home, would not be permissible. When considering this exhibit, there was a concern about the presentation of that taller garage up toward the front property line. This code provides a requirement that that be recessed five feet from the front facade of the home, helping to blend and improve the aesthetics where an accessory garage or storage structure is taller than the home. So we think it's a very balanced public policy approach to resolving interests and needs of the community while maintaining adequate design components. And the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously offered a recommendation of approval with that modification. Planning staff, based upon consistency with the county's Land Development Code and Conference of Plan, is recommending that this body schedule a second hearing on January 9th, 2024, with support.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll come back to the board. This is the first reading. I'll take a motion to move it forward.
Move approval.
Second with a question. I just want, actually, more of a comment. You guys both, we all got inundated for about 10 months with these kinds of questions. It was crazy for the longest time. And every time we came to you guys, we're trying to figure out how to do this and get it right. I'm so grateful for the work that you guys have done to actually come up with a solution that makes us better, but also gives that opportunity because we're seeing so many of these requests.
And it's older homes that are needing it because of a boat or motorhome. So...
They rose to the occasion like always, and they fulfilled.
We tried. We have a great team, and we do have a number of residents that are waiting for this to get approved before they apply for building permits. So we're moving this forward expeditiously.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Good job.
Thank you.
That concludes our meeting. I'll let you close it out, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The board will hold two meetings on Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. The first meeting will be an informal meeting at 9:00 a.m., and the second meeting will be a regular meeting at 1:00 p.m. Both of those meetings will be held here in these commission chambers at 2300 Virginia Avenue. And that concludes our announcements.
All right. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.